All right, everybody ready? The City of Glendale Common Council is now in session. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, three weeks ago tomorrow, we held an election and we have three members of the Common Council who were elected in that election. So tonight becomes our annual organizational meeting and that is by Wisconsin state statutes as well as city ordinances. Madam Clerk, where are three alderpersons who were elected three weeks ago? Have they been properly sworn in?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I want to remind members of the council as well as the public that the council operational procedures are found in the city ordinances 2.2.16 F. All of our meetings are run according to those procedures as well as tonight's annual organizational meeting. It is required per city ordinance. So the first item, having a new city council, is the election of a common council president. Just a reminder, the mayor has no vote, does not have a tie. So this. I did not, because that, oh, this was on here. Thank you very much. No, thank you. Yes, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Kennedy.
Here.
Alderwoman Vukovich. Alderman Doherty. Alderman Gelhard.
Here.
Hollerman Bailey.
Here.
Alderman Schmelzling. Alderwoman Shaw.
Alderman Shaw did email me earlier that she may be a little late. She's coming from another event. Thank you. Yeah. No, that was fine. Thank you. That was a point of order because we can't elect the common council president until we've had a roll call to verify who's here. So. So remember, the election of the common council president is entirely among the six elected alderpersons. The mayor does not cast a tie-breaking vote. I have no say in this other than to run the proceedings for you. So at this point, I would open the floor to nominations for the position of common council president. Is there a nomination?
I would nominate Jim Doherty.
Okay, Jim Doherty, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Okay, are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? And third and final call, are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to close nominations.
A move.
Move by Alderman Gelhard, is there a second?
I can.
Second by Alderman Schmelzling to close nominations. All those in favor of closing nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. The motion carries and nominations are closed. There is one candidate for the position of common council president. All those in favor of electing as your common council president, Jim Doherty, for the next year, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Council President.
Thank you.
All right, next is the 2023-2024 Common Council Standing Committee Appointments. These I did keep essentially intact from last year. I did not make any changes to them. So can I have a motion to approve the common council standing committees?
A move.
A move by Alderman Gelhard, second by Alderman Bailey. Any discussion? Yes, Alderman Gelhard.
Just one point, looking at our website, the Glendale City website. Those committees need to be updated, just so you know.
Last year, I believe I flip-flopped some of you, right? Because the committees have been the same for a few years and I bet that just never got updated from last year. Okay.
On other note, I think I was flipped in to be legislative and judiciary and now I'm back to public safety. So that's probably what happened. So there might be a slight change this year from last year, but regardless, this looks fine.
Okay, we'll make sure that Steph, look at that. Okay, all those in favor of approving the standing committee appointments, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion carries. Next, the appointments to the various city committees, commissions and boards. As you know, we did dissolve the Architectural Review Board. And the, so I did find a place for everybody who was on the ARB that wanted to serve. I was able to find places on. One person went to the library board, two people going to the Board of Appeals. Somebody going somewhere else, I don't remember what, but I found places for the people who were on the ARB that wanted to continue serving. I found a place for everybody. So can I get a motion to approve the appointments as presented?
A move.
Move Alderman Gelhard, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Bailey, any further discussion? Yes, ma'am. You have to speak into them here.
We still have the portal where people are interested in being on these committees, to be on it. How was that?
Um, I mean, I get maybe two or three a year that come through that portal. Usually it's people saying, I meet them somewhere and they say, I'd be interested in serving on something and or we get somebody who's angry about something and then says, I want to serve on that committee. Anyway, but yeah, we do get a couple that come in through the year from the, uh, the website. All right, any other questions, comments? Okay, all those in favor of approving the appointments, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. I would just give you a heads up on two things regarding the library board. In the current library board agreement, it does not indicate that there is to be a member, that one of the members of the board is to be the district administrator for the school district. So at the time, I just appointed Greg Cabara as one of Glendale's appointees. I am now working with Bayside. They're going to be sending out something to each of the four communities to amend the board composition, to increase it by one. So that Glendale gets one of its spots back on the library board. So Greg Cabara will serve as the district administrator from that point on and we'll have a seat available on the library board and I've got somebody lined up to take that seat. So. So right now, we have four seats. One of ours, I appointed Greg Cabara, so we were in compliance with state statutes. Because the city, the district administrator has to, the school district administrator has to serve, has to be on the library board. So I just appointed Greg a couple of years ago, but I, we really want our fourth spot back. So we're working on that. The other one is, it does say in the library agreement that the governing board, a representative of the governing board must serve. So for a long time, we had Joanne on the library board, but then we, when Joanne's resignation, we appointed Carl. I did check with the city attorney and he indicated that as the governing body, we can delegate duties and responsibilities to our city administrator. So it wasn't a random person. We delegated directly to the city administrator, who is the employee that reports to all six of us. So according to Nathan's review last week, our appointing Carl, he can serve as our designee on the library board. So I haven't heard any pushback from any of our neighbors about that one, but just wanted to make sure people were clear of those two things. So we will be seeing in the coming weeks a slight amendment to the library agreement that changes the board from nine people to 10, one of the, by the addition of the superintendent of schools. So. All right, we will now move on to public comment. Glendale residents, business owners and property owners are invited to speak to the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda, but are within the city's ability to regulate or control. Is there anyone wishing to speak in public comment? Certainly, council chambers first, anyone wishing to speak. All right, is there anyone joining us on the Zoom that wishes to speak in public comment to an item that is not on the agenda? If so, you may unmute and state your name and address. All right, we will consider public comment closed and we'll move on to the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of our last meeting, monthly reports and a resolution setting the time and date of the first 2023 Board of Review meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, please? Move by Alderman Schmelzling, is there a second? Second of Alderman Doherty. Any questions? Okay, without objection, we'll consider the consent agenda approved and move on. We have a number of items of new business. First is the appointment of four members of their community to serve as editors of the 75th Anniversary Book. We've had community meetings. The first one had about 40 people, second one had a little over 30, 32-ish. So we've had really good showings from people in the community that are very interested in updating our 50th Anniversary Book to a 75th Anniversary Book. The four individuals I am appointing are asking you to approve for appointment. Amanda Seeligman and Kim Hernandez are both PhDs in urban history. They both teach at UWM. Martha Burgland is a retired English instructor from M A T C, who has written a number of books about Wisconsin history. And Nancy Herrick is a former managing editor of the journal Sentinel. So we have four distinguished writers in our community who are interested in serving as editors of the 75th Anniversary Book. Can I get a motion to appoint them, please?
A move.
Move Alderman Gelhard, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Bailey, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the appointments for the 75th Anniversary Book, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Carries. Next item, 5B, review and approval of an acceptance of a donation of a utility terrain vehicle from Port Yamaha for the PD chief.
Yes, thank you. Port Yamaha to Port Washington approached us and asked us if we'd like to get a utility terrain vehicle at no cost to them. Yamaha has, Yamaha has a Yamaha loan program where they, they give these out to law enforcement and firefighters, fire departments. No cost, it's for a year. If the year is up and both parties agree that it's a good program and it's useful, they would take our old one and give us a new one. The only thing that we really have to do is, is they'd like us to put some sticker. I owe you that a little over $25,000. The only cost that we would have on this would be buying a couple helmets and approximately one year of maintenance, which is about $25, $250. There is training courses for officers that are born after 1988. And it's, yeah. So I'm exempt, but, but it's, it's, it's an online course for like $35 that we could, we could absorb that through our county thing, our, our training fund. So.
I'd leave all of us up here.
Yeah, we all, we all get free rides at the Fourth of July. And what we like to use it for, we'll use this for sure to see how it, how it works, but for the interurban trail, there's been a couple of times where we weren't able to get anyone back there unless someone got hurt. So we did take them out that way. There's a couple of spots in Clutch Park that we can't really patrol with our cars because it sinks into the mud and it, it more of our community relations tool, we'd take it out for special events and stuff like that.
Any comments or question?
So, so is this their way of more or less getting brand recognition among like police departments so that if we decide we never want another one that they'd, we'd purchase one from them? I'm just trying to understand why they do this.
I, I think, reading between the lines, how they do this, this is a program Yamaha has for, for, for law enforcement and fire departments. I believe the issue probably is, and this is my guess, is that they donate a $25,000 UTV. And that's a donation they had to write off. We give it back to them after a year. They're able to sell that as a used vehicle and still get a lot of money out of it. So it's a, it's a, it's a PR thing for them and, and they're still making money off of it, I'm assuming. We used to have the same process with Conkers used to donate a car for, for our, their program, our P I O. It was the same way. The general manager's daughter would come in, pick out a car that she wanted. He would give it to us for two years and we would give it back to them and that's what the daughter would drive. So. It's true. So I can say that. I don't believe Conkers is there anymore.
If Conkers decides their policy on how they decide what vehicles they loan, it's up to them.
It is.
So, but, um. Okay, that's, that was my only question. So I, I looked him up briefly. It looks like a reputable, you know, dealer. So it looks fine.
Any other questions or comments? Can we get a motion then to accept the donation of the UTV?
A move.
Move Alderman Doherty, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Gelhard. Any further discussion? All in favor of accepting the donation, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Well, one no. Okay, for a vote of five to one, the motion carries. All right, next is the approval of the bids for the 2023 sidewalk program. I don't see Charlie, so I'm assuming Carl's handling that.
Testing. Oh, good, thank you, sorry. So the city recently bid the sidewalk program for 2023 with favorable results. Primrose Electric was the low bidder at $58,120. The list and the map of the sidewalks to be replaced is included in the agenda packet. This is a one-year program. This is the same contractor that won the bid last year for the sidewalk replacement program that was completed primarily in Crestwood.
Thank you. Any questions? Yeah, go ahead, Alderman Shaw.
Oh, slightly off topic, but maybe still related is this is funding for sidewalks. I know we have a bike and pedestrian plan and at some point it might be nice just to see what were the recommended sidewalks? And maybe we bring that up for like capital improvement in the future.
That's a good idea. We have a meeting in a couple of weeks for staff to start reviewing the five-year capital plan and stuff like that. So it'll definitely come forward, but thank you.
We could see what, you know, how far we could go with either repairs or with, you know, new additions. Thank you.
All right, we get a motion then to approve the bid. Please. Move Alderman Vukovich, second of Alderman Schmelzling. Any further discussion? All in favor of accepting and approving the bid for the 2023 sidewalk program with Primrose Electric, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion carries. Next is the approval of a resignation agreement and release between the City of Glendale and Sean Lancer. That was signed out to all of. Second, Alderman Vukovich, second of Alderman Doherty, any discussion? All in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion. Next item is review and approval of professional services agreement between the City of Glendale and Public Administration Associates for recruitment services, not to exceed 12,900. Mr. Warwick?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So this agreement in front of you, like the mayor stated, is for recruitment services for a finance director position, not to exceed $12,900. We have Daryl Hoffman from PAA, who's the representative of the recruitment firm here to answer any questions that you may have about the agreement or the timeframe. We anticipate about a three-month timeframe for the replacement of this position, which should hopefully coincide with the interim appointment that was appointed at the last meeting.
And would that also probably coincide with wrapping up the 2022 audit?
Uh, yes, sir. Mr. Hoffman and myself discussed that today regarding the audit and the completion should be completed around the same time the new person starts to hopefully start off without having to complete an audit and could just jump into the day-to-day financial data. So the, the goal is to have the audit pretty close to completed by the time the new finance director starts.
Thank you.
And we've started on the 2022 audit with Jefferson Wells, who was appointed to help complete the 2020 on audit, which is done. And they are now knee-deep in the 2022 audit.
Um, any questions from?
Yes, all over.
Just. Oh, for big. Do we just decide that we're going to use them or do we try to find a lower price or anything like that?
There are primarily two recruitment firms that are in this area, PAA and Gov HR. We did not go for a price from Gov HR. We simply went with PAA because of their experience and the fantastic job they have done with recruitment in Glendale in the past.
I deserve it. So Public Administration Associates obviously did our search less than a year ago. Provided us with an interim, an interim city administrator and has now provided us also with one of our other interim folks that we're utilizing. So. And if you remember from last year, their bid actually came in lower than the other company did.
I, I. I, nothing against them, they're one of. But I just still have to ask the question, like process, that's all.
Any other questions? Can we get a motion then to approve the professional services agreement with Public Administration Associates to recruit a finance director?
A move.
Move Alderman Gelhard, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Schmelzling. Is there any discussion?
The only discussion I have is I really would like to see proposals, even if it's just a, a quick something or other, to make sure that there's not another organization that may do this work that we've never heard of or somebody who, there's other forms that may have serviced us, but I just would like to see that.
I guess if we have any futures.
For future, don't start now, just future.
Okay.
Certainly, we can do that and that is definitely a good point due to the timing of trying to find a replacement when the interim contract expires. We put this in front of you now to try to coincide with that.
That's why I'm not objecting to it now. I mean, because I know what our timing is, but I want a pattern of practice of us trying to get the, the best deal and the best people at the same time, even though you were great.
And when I just looked at the price, I'm guessing it's about 10% of what an annual salary would be. So I'm assuming that's pretty much in line with what firms would charge for this.
Any other discussion?
Most firms in the private sector will pay 30%. If we know them well and have pull, it's 20, but it's never less than 20.
Daryl drove all the way down from Shaboygan. If anyone has any questions for him while he's here in the, in the audience.
He knows how to get here, which is.
Thank you for coming.
I'll just say that we, we miss working with you, but you did a really good job recruiting a city administrator for us. So. Hey, the rest of us thinks. I gotta write this down. All right. So we do have a motion. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hoffman since he's here? All right, we'll call for a vote then. All those in favor of approving the professional services agreement, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion carries. Thank you for driving all the way down from Shaboygan to sit quietly in the audience.
You have to talk to me, so that was his highlight.
Okay. All right, uh, next is a recommendation from the Planning Commission regarding a certified survey map for the, so we have actually several of these tonight. The first one is from Johnson Controls. Uh, this is certified survey map with multiple properties on Florist and Baker Road. I will turn it over to Mr. Fellows, who can show us. Are you going to pull that up for us or?
Ken, if you, like I didn't.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I can do that. Otherwise.
I, I don't know that, I don't know that we need to.
Assumed you had looked at the packet. It's a pretty simple. So essentially on the corner of Baker and Florist, there are, uh, there's a parcel and then there's the, uh, what used to be the Milwaukee Biscuit Company that's right behind there. Essentially, Wies Development is buying three parcels in a row. The lower two southern parcels are going to be combined into one at this time. Um, in the future, that third parcel might be combined with the other two, but the CSM will allow them to be able to begin building the new building, which will actually cross over what is a current property line. So it's a pretty simple CSM. It's just removing one line, creating one lot out of two.
Any questions? And this did already come back from the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission is recommending that we approve the CSM. So get a motion to approve the CSM, please.
A move.
Move Alderman Doherty, is there a second? Second, Alderwoman Shaw, Alderman Gelhard, any questions?
So is this the project that they scrapped before and now they're renewing it? Is this?
Yes, this is the same, this is the same project that was over on Civic and Green Bay. For various reasons, they decided they didn't like that site. They did go around looking at other locations in the, the, the greater area and they decided to, uh, they really wanted him to be next to the headquarters and, um, this time last year, that building was not for sale or for lease, but in the, the months that have proceeded, uh, that one building is available and the other business is willing to, has a building that's bigger than what they need and, um, they'd be glad to relocate. So it actually worked out well for, for all three parties, both the sellers and, and Wies and then JCI.
Any other questions? All those in favor of approving. I, Wies Development, please.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion carries. All right, uh, next item, item 5G, recommendation from the Planning Commission regarding a certified survey map for Glendale Partners, 4205 North Port Washington Road. Mr. Fellows?
Their CSM you have seen in the past, um, the original CSM had a small piece of property that was going to be kind of a swap with Mr. Macky, that Maki that is next door. That required a deed. There were some things between the two property owners and so this CSM basically cleans up that, that line essentially and doesn't require the deed from the adjacent property owner would allow the CSM to actually be recorded with the register of deeds.
Any comments? This is a recommendation. They recommended to, I get a motion to approve. Please. Move Alderman Bailey, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Gelhard. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the CSM, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion carries. All right. Uh, next item, item 5H is review and potential action on ordinance amending Title 15, Chapter 6, Regulation of Signs, Billboards and Other Advertising Media. Uh, I did have a request from Rob Cronwell to speak to this item. So I'm going to recognize Mr. Cronwell on the Zoom first. Rob, you may unmute. And even though we know you, state your name and address, please.
Sure, Robert Cronwell, 7530 North Applewood Lane. Uh, I had, uh, three issues with this. The first one's in section five. Uh, there seems to be a kind of typo there. It says that Title 15, Chapter 6, Section 5.6.10. A 5 is created as follows. Uh, there already is an A5 and I think this was meant as an add-on and should be A6.
Rob, could you repeat that?
So it's section five, where it says that Title 15, Chapter 6, Section 15.6.10. A 5 is created as follows. I think it's supposed to be A6 because there's already an A5 in the existing code and I think this was supposed to be added on and not replace it.
Our code service will clean up any little things like that when they codify it and they put it into the code. So we can, uh, we can certainly note it, um, if, if, if that's verifiable at this point, but the good news is if there are little things like that, they'll, they'll pick it up when they, when they, that, that's what, what I would consider a scriveners error, if you will.
Okay. Uh, the other question I had is, uh, I noticed the political signs section doesn't set any size or number limit for signs. And I was wondering if there was any consideration of adding that.
There, there's not, and that's actually a state statute. It is a freedom of speech issue. If you want to paint the side of your house to vote for a certain candidate, you may paint the side of your house to vote for a certain candidate. We did have at one point political sign restrictions in the City of Glendale. After a state Supreme Court decision against another municipality, Glendale changed its ordinance to comply with the Supreme Court ruling.
Yeah, it was, yeah, that decision only, uh, only regulated or protected residential properties. And the one I'm thinking of was that a commercial property and even the state statute says that you can regulate signs that exceed 11 square feet in the area. So it's just something to consider.
Okay, thank you. And then your third item?
Uh, is in the residential message sign section. Uh, it limits it to no more than two signs and it says under area, a maximum of 3.5 square feet on each side of the sign. 3.5 square feet is really, really small. Most of the signs you see go up are probably three by four. So they're at least like, I don't know, or two by four, like eight, six to eight feet, square feet. Um, and I don't know if that was supposed to be 3.5 feet on each side of the sign, like 3.5 by 3.5 or it's supposed to be 3.5 square feet for the total sign area.
Did the residential messaging signs a couple of years ago, and this is just the carryover language from that. This is like those people that put the, the signs in their front yard, you know, the, the little message ones about, you know, hate has no home here or Nicolaid Night graduate lives here or those sorts of things. And I believe that was the sign of, the size of your standard yard sign, which is what most of these are. Um, we can certainly look at that and.
I mean, that's less than two feet by two feet. So most of the signs are bigger than that. I, I'm just pointing that out. And I, and I saw during the pandemic, a lot more people were putting up signs about celebrating birthdays and things and some of them, it's like a separate sign for each letter and whatever they're spelling out on their lawn. And so the, the two sign limit becomes a problem quickly.
Sure. And. And. And well, the other, the other thing is, is that these also are complaint-based. So, um, if somebody puts three. and well, the other, the other thing is, is that these also are complaint based. So, um, if somebody puts three signs in their yard, you know, unless there's a neighbor that calls in to complain about it, they, they don't. And most of our things are, are complaint based. Most of our, our concerns like this.
Yeah, I understand, but I always think it's a good idea to take into account what the community is already doing instead of suddenly making a bunch of people violators.
Sure.
They have no idea. So I mean, a three point, a three and a half square foot sign is really small and it's smaller than most of the signs you're going to see out there. So I, it, that, that was my biggest comment on that.
Okay. Well, we can look at that and that could be a, a future change.
First, so, um, just for clarification on that particular one, and it'd be a little bit of my introduction of it. Essentially for the temporary sign section, we went through, um, the way it's currently written, there's very long paragraphs with lots of sentences. And so we basically tried to break it down to make it a little bit simpler because a lot of people call and they go, well, I read it, but what am I supposed to do? So we basically tried to say, do you need a permit or not? What's the location, the area, the time period? We tried to break it down. So it was much more simpler. But that 3.5, it, it, the current ordinance says, for instance, a maximum three and a half square feet on each side. Um, so that we, we've just kind of taken the same language. We just, for the most part, the temporary signs, there's not substantive changes. It's more formatting to try to make it more readable, um, for the average business person. So maybe we can limit some of our phone calls and they can understand, um, more clearly what. But if you think it needs to be larger, we could deal with that at whatever time.
For quick reference.
Okay, Alderman Schmelzling.
I think they were trying to do like the usual political sign or whatever sign is like usually a foot and a half by two feet, which makes it at three. So I think it's just trying to keep it in that general size was the original, um, intent when I remember this, because I, I know I had a lot of residents coming up to me about like the slowdown signs and those are smaller and just so I just, I remember I did some silly measurements and I found that my own political signs were within the threshold size, even if they weren't political, so.
Thank you, Mr. Cromwell. Do you have anything else for us?
Nope, that does it.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Fellows, I'll turn it back over to you.
Sure. Uh, so just wanted to run through, uh, kind of a quick synopsis of what's before you. One is the correction of the title, uh, from medium to media, uh, sign media. Um, the other part was just, uh, amending, uh, uh, definition section and channel, uh, in title 16 to create, to create a digital or electronic method, uh, electronic billboard, um, uh, definition, uh, adding the references to licensing in 16. Also, um, uh, I guess real quick, uh, adding, um, the creation of 15.6.10, um, that talks about electronic billboards. Um, that was, uh, a combination of different communities, Milwaukee, and, uh, we've worked, uh, for a number of months, um, Nathan and I worked on that, updating and organizing temporary sign section, um, increasing the allowable sign, uh, area for temporary signs and longer timeframe. So for the commercial ones, we had a very short timeframe, sometimes, um, like five days. Um, the square footage was very small. Most people couldn't comply and they honestly left it out longer, which then if we were trying to enforce it, it became, uh, kind of a, uh, an issue. And most people who are going to have something, they probably want to have it up the week before their event. So let's say they're going to have like a, a sale on shoes. And they probably are going to want to advertise that a few days before and then during their event. So to have it to be very limited, um, was just kind of problematic. And then they'd have to come in and get another permit and pay another fee. It just seemed a little, um, burdensome from that perspective. And then, uh, the creation of, uh, seven, chapter seven with regard to bill posting. And then, uh, clarification, there was a, um, in the fee section, it was a 0.7%. So it was a little confusing on, um, on that part. So we just simplified it to be, uh, 7%. So, uh, that's a quick summary. I'd be glad to answer any questions. Oh, and one other last minute sort of item is you have a, a papered copy in front of you. If you turn to page, um, nine of the document, um, it would be, uh, what was identified as, uh, maybe under section six for those on the, um, the virtual meeting, it'd be under 15.610. Oh, and it was sub, um, L vested rights or interest. Uh, Nathan and I talked about that for a variety of reasons to today. And Nathan was recommending we just strike that entire language in, um, that L and then, uh, items. Um, M and N and those subsequent numbers would be re-labeled. So M becomes L and N becomes M, et cetera. Um.
That's what was on our, uh, spots at the council when you walked in.
Correct. And, uh, so, um, we, Nathan or I would be glad to answer any questions on why we think that should be deleted, but, um, that would be the last, uh, kind of summary item.
A reason for that, it's pretty simple. There's, there's a state statute that governs non-conforming uses, um, uh, for structures and, and fixtures like this. And then there's, uh, some well-established case law that also. There we go. That also talks about, um, when, when property interests are, are accrue and in the issuance of a permit or um, uh, approval of plans and those types of things. So there's our pretty, there's already, well, pretty established case law and state statutes that apply to that. So it's kind of preempted by those and, um, um, so there's just, this, this cleans it up, uh, and, and because some of what's in here would.
All right, Alderman Gellhart.
So, uh, just, uh, going to the last bullet point on your memo there. Uh, where, where it says the permit fee, the original text said 0.7% of the sign cost for signs over 500 square feet and should have just read 7% of the signs cost because those are two different numbers there. So I don't know what we're, were, were we looking for something that was slightly under 1% or are we looking at, you know, something closer to 10% of the signs cost?
I was originally drafted originally to be 7% and afterwards we realized the zero on the point part, um, it, 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 uh, if you wanted it to be a lower number, we could percentage, we could certainly do that.
Number.
Supposed to be 7%.
digitally and then at at a percentage on.
Correct. So it was, it wa- it went to you originally, uh, as 0.7%. The intent was 7%, but point seven, i- if, if you think of it as decimals, it's not really 7%, it's 70. So you like, you use the calculator. So it was caught afterwards that it could be confusing.
Okay, just, I just want to make sure that.
Cause if we just said point zero, 0.7, then that would be, if you calculated it, that'd be 70%. So, uh, we just wanted to clarify it as seven.
I just want to make sure that, that, that the intent of, we of the city was reflected in those numbers. So.
Yeah, we weren't aiming for 70.
Okay.
Are any other questions? All right. Can we get a motion then to adopt the ordinance, uh, the regulation of signs, billboards, other advertising media as presented? And this will be the one that was on our desks when we came in tonight that has the, the, um, that one particular part had some additional strike through language that took out the vested writer interest. So get a motion to adopt that version, please.
Alloked.
Move Alderman Doherty, is there a second?
Second.
Second about a Miguel hard. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. All right. Thank you, Mr. Fellows. All right. Next is commission committee, board and staff reports, and I will start with city administrator.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of things tonight. The first thing, uh, the city today launched was our online municipal code. Uh, we did have a code that was online in a number of different sections in various PDFs. Uh, it was quite difficult to search in and find things often just because of the way the setup was. Uh, we have now launched the online uni code, which, um, is a very searchable document. I know staff around the city has searched it and is very excited about it. Uh, the one downfall right now is they started codifying it in August. So there's codes that have been adopted since August that aren't quite in there yet. We've sent those over to them today. And we will send over tomorrow the code that was adopted tonight. So if you haven't had a chance, check it out. If you want to search for things, um, it's a very good resource. Uh, second thing is we had our bond closing today for the fire station construction, um, of about $7.8 million, $7.6 million. Uh, so our rate came in at 3.81%, very favorable, um, in the condition. So, uh, we were able to proceed and close on the loan documents for the fire station construction, which is now starting to pick up. They are doing the asbestos abatement on the project now, and hopefully the demolition will occur immediately following that.
And just like, um, Harrison, MMSD also went out today. And MMSD, their bond rating or their bond percentage was 3.59%. And we got 3.81 for the city. So, uh, for the borrowing of the fire department. So good work on getting the audit done and, and getting us to the point where we could move forward with the borrowing on behalf of the fire department. So.
Uh, thank you, but all the for that, thanks to the staff on that one and our contractors, they all did a great job and they knew what the deadline was. That's all I said. They did all the other work. So it's, it's all on them.
Any attorney?
Thank you. Uh, nothing new this evening. Thank you.
Right, city clerk. Okay, chief?
Sign your report.
All right, number one.
Police commission meeting tomorrow, 6:30. We will be trying to find the best of the best to add into our police department.
Two.
Nothing tonight.
Number three.
Nothing this evening.
Four.
Nothing this evening.
Five.
Thing this evening.
Six.
Music in the Glenn, all the bands have returned their contracts or on the next step, we have six of them and opening day is June 21.
All right. Um, and then, uh, tomorrow morning is fire department meeting when the fire department will approve those bonds that the city went out and borrowed today on behalf of the fire department. And then I just wanted to let you all know, I do have some informational, uh, stuff here. Carl and I met a couple of weeks ago with representatives from We Energies and they went through with us all the different areas they've done upgrades and, uh, what all those upgrades are. So if anybody's interested in that, I'd be happy to, to share with you what they have spent so far and what their plans are. So.
Get that electronically would be great.
Yeah, I can have, uh, someone scan it and then we can send it out to everybody. But yeah, it shows, it shows a map that shows the city of Glendale and then there's all these colored areas on the map that show what kind of improvements they did. And there's a key over here and then with that key, if you look on the second page, it can tell you what those improvements were. So, um, doesn't change the fact that we've got a hearing coming up with We Energies and Carl and I have been talking about what, what things we want to say, what things we want to highlight. So, um, but you know, they, they did volunteer to meet with us and, you know, after uh, more outages in the last few weeks, including one that was during early voting in which we actually had people at machines doing voting. When the, when the power went out, even though it came back on about 30 seconds later, those were spoiled ballots. They had to be reissued new ballots. The machines had to be rebooted because those, those papers were stuck inside the machines. It's like all that whole process, people came in to vote and ended up being here for a half an hour because the power went out for 30 seconds. So, you know, we, we did make sure to bring up like those kinds of concerns with the We Energies folks. Let them see like just the reality of even a 30 second blip when you're in the middle of early voting. It'd be a half an hour out of somebody's day when they came in to try and vote quickly ahead of election day. So. Yeah, go ahead, Alderman.
And I, this is just for the electricity, correct? Is there something else with our gas outages and some of the construction issues that we've seen?
Well, the gas outage was one gas outage and it was a rather rare thing and it actually involved the construction issues over along the freeway. They've actually been pretty reliable on gas. It's been the electrical outlet outages. And as Carl indicated in one of the summaries he put together for us, if you look over the last two or three years, 2% of the time of your 24/7, right? 2% of the time somewhere in Glendale is without power. That's, yeah, that's not acceptable. So.
Makes sense. It's more construction specific. Thank you.
Yeah, but I'll have these scanned and sent out to you all. So that, that concludes my report. Um, with nothing else for us this evening, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Alloked.
Thank you, Alderman Gellhart. Is there a second on adjourning?
Second.
Second by common council president Doherty. Uh, all those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Stand adjourned. No water, isn't that enough?
I was very thankful for water.
Yeah.